Good evening and welcome to Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
President Wasserman.
Here.
Vice President Baker.
Here.
Secretary Kaminsky, myself, here. Treasurer Branstad.
Here.
Member Gordon.
Here.
Member McFarland.
Here.
Member Vanderkellen. Absent.
Thank you. The first item on the agenda, which is new agenda item, title board member resignation. I'd like to write a letter. Dr. Sherwin, yes, in ten minutes, Administration Building, Michigan. Dear Dr. Sherwin, I hereby resign from my position as trustee of MPS Board of Education effective September 9th, 2038, due to other commitments that must take priority. It has been an honor and privilege to be entrusted with the care and education of students of Midland. I am confident you will do a brilliant job of leading our schools into the 21st century, and I thank my fellow board members for donating their time to volunteer for this worthy cause. Sincerely, Kimberly Vanderkellen. So, we have received resignation from Kim. I would accept the motion to accept the resignation.
I will move to accept the resignation of Kimberly Vanderkellen as drafted.
Support.
President Wasserman?
Yes.
Vice President Baker?
Yes.
Secretary Kaminsky, myself, yes. Treasurer Branstad?
Yes.
Member Gordon?
Yes.
Member McFarland?
Yes.
Member Vanderkellen, absent.
So, 6-0. Thank you. We hereby accept the resignation of Ms. Vanderkellen, and we thank her for her months of service and for her interest in the kids of our school. That will move on to
To the next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. In the consent agenda, we just see there's the approval of last meeting's minutes. Staff members of resignation list. Also, recommended employment list.
Approval of Dr. Kaminsky's expense reports for the and thankfully for
Be trained?
And approval to authorize legal ability to law. Any additional instructions made in consent agenda? Okay, see none, I'll take a motion.
I move that we accept consent agenda items 3.1 through 3.5.
Support.
Move by Treasurer Branstad, support by Member Gordon. I'll vote, call, say aye.
Aye.
All vote.
Ayes have it.
At this point, we'll move on to requests to address the board. We have no formal requests. Does anybody in the audience care to address? See none, we'll move on to Board of Education matters, presentation board. I'll turn it over to Ms. Sherwin.
As we've been working on bringing some presentations to the board, we have our first one tonight, and I'm going to introduce Mr. Jeff Chester, Principal Northeast, and Mr. Poole, Principal at Jefferson, to introduce our guests. Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to come tonight. We're just going to share with all of you the new program that's taking place at the middle schools after school, the Rock Program. And just a little background, this started last spring as a trial. It was an eight-week period where both middle schools tried to really find opportunities for the kids who weren't connected to the school in some way through, you know, maybe your more traditional activities, sports, music programs, some other clubs. And we wanted to have a safe place for them to work, provide them, you know, supervision, give them, you know, a meal, a snack. And the eight-week program in the spring went really well. So this year, we're happy to say that at both Northeast and Jefferson, the Rock Program is going to be running for the entire year. And I'll let Mr. Poole add a little bit about how that's going.
It's going very well at Jefferson as well. I mean, it's yet another unique community collaboration that we have with another organization. And I wasn't as part of it as much last spring, but this fall so far, we've had a good turnout, and we look forward to grow even more. We have, I think, almost 20 students at Jefferson that are in the after-school program. So, we're going to introduce Bev and Lori to do a little more point for you.
Well, good evening, and thank you for having us here. My name is Bev Wenzel. I'm the Executive Director of the Rock Youth Center. And The Rock is very excited to be partnering with Midland Public Schools, Northeast and Jefferson, to bring this program. It all started probably in 2001 when we started serving youth of the community, and we did it onsite in, on our Gordonville Road location, serving predominantly Bullet Creek students. We wanted to expand that reach, but we have over 13 years' experience of working with middle school and high school students. So we're very happy to say when we could partner here with the schools and bring those programs, those opportunities that we've had, the experience that we've learned to serving young people to your district. So we thank you very much for trusting us with that and welcoming us. The goals of The Rock when we work with young people is really to give them successful opportunities. We want them to be successful students. We want them to grow into successful adults. We pay close attention to the developmental assets, and the goals of all of our programs are to work with the kids and help build developmental assets that will ensure their success and help lower risk-taking behavior during these troublesome years.
We had begun to collaborate because we had found there's a contingency of students, particularly after school, that will often linger around the building, having no place to go, or go home to an empty home. And, or be, you know, they're between sports and need something else that they want to commit to. So, we found that in collaborating with The Rock with the intention that they had with the building, the assets, and building character qualities, it would be a great audience to reach some of these kids. And with their desire to reach out to the schools and, you know, our desire to reach the kids that we have obviously in our buildings, it couldn't have been a better opportunity for us to bring the programs together. So that's initially how that started.
So when we ran the test pilot, the biggest complaint that we had, or possibly the only complaint we had, is that it was too short. And we actually ended it before 4:00 p.m., so we started every day after school and ran until about 4:00. In an effort to serve parents and meet the needs better, transportation after school is an issue. I mean, that's one of the big things. And we know a lot of children are home alone until 5:00, 5:30 in the evening. So what we wanted to be able to do is make sure we could fill that gap, and not make the situation worse, but actually make it better. So what we decided to do in the schools, as we all sat together planning this year, is we decided it would run the 174 days of school. So every day after school, we close when there's a snow day, obviously. And it runs until 5:30 p.m., so parents can make arrangements. If they don't get out of work till 5:30, we're happy to accommodate parents. And again, the purpose is to create successful adults and successful students. So what happens in the program, the kids come in, they do get a snack, there's tutors. We're partnering with different places, including Northwood University, to provide tutors to the program. We also have homework help whenever there may not be tutors available. They're doing games, but games with a purpose. We do a lot of community building, a lot of group building, a lot of opportunities for the kids. Positive peers are very important. So we help connect the kids to other peers as well as positive adult mentors. And we become that trusted adult, sometimes a cool adult, that all students need. Great relationships with parents still require kids to have good, positive adult role models outside of the family. So that's one of the roles that we fill.
What we're trying to do, obviously, this program has a cost associated with it. We've really tried to put our heads together to find a way to make this affordable or not a cost to the families. We've been able to tap into our own resources with our staff to ask them to donate non-perishable food items to contribute to the snacks. And they have been overwhelmed and joyed to bring in whatever they can because they know that this has been a problem for a long time and that this is going to be a great opportunity for both buildings and the kids. The way that we get kids involved, it's very simple. Last year, we did this pilot program, as Jeff Chester mentioned, you know, with the eight weeks. We started with a small group of about 25 to 30 kids, and those kids spoke for this program themselves. A lot of them returned this year and spoke to how much fun it was for them. And then we just did a little bit of PR ahead of time with the open houses and the parent nights that have already been held. And we're growing, and they are getting phone calls off the hook, so it's been a really great opportunity. And then I'll let Bev talk about the specific registration process.
We fully expect to serve probably a minimum of 50 students at each location. And we're not sure how far it's going to go past that. We're prepared to even let those numbers go bigger. We never want to turn a student away. We never want to turn them away because of ability to pay, as Lori mentioned, or because we're full. So we're going to work it out to accommodate as many of the kids as we possibly can. When the kids come in Which one? Okay. In order to fund the program, part of the partnership agreement that we had is that everybody's going to do the best they could, but The Rock is out fundraising. We are happy to say that the Midland Area Community Foundation had granted us a request for $50,000 for this year to fund this program, so that is a great start. We have done one mailing to our donors and expanded that donor list inviting support specific for this program. And the fee structure that we set up for the kids is pretty much $3.00 a day if you pre-register, $5.00 a day if you do a drop-in. And that fee is completely, the parents can waive it just by making a phone call. If it's a financial burden on the families, that's fine. We are happy to waive that fee. But we are looking to the parents who can afford to help support the program to be part of making this program sustainable and that hopefully, at some point, this program will be able to completely fund itself. In the meantime, we will work on different fundraising efforts to be able to make the program sustainable. I think that's it, unless anyone has any questions.
Questions?
Just comment, I was over at Northeast a couple days last weekend. It's exciting. It's new and it's growing, and thank you for doing that.
Well, thanks for volunteering, Lynn. And there are many volunteer opportunities available, if I could just leverage that.
As far as your fundraising goes, what type of activities do you guys do? Is it on a weekly basis, monthly, quarterly? How does that work?
That we fundraise?
Yes.
Well, we have a multi-leg, multi-leg stool, whatever, approach to fundraising. So there's a lot of different components that we do. We have an annual fundraising dinner that we do to help bring in support for the organization as a whole. We do grant writing on a very regular basis. We have an individual donor base. We do some events, different things, like you can do, like Kroger cards, and we're going to do an online auction. Some of those are dedicated strictly to this program. A lot of them are for general operation funds for The Rock, which ultimately support this program if there isn't adequate funds for this program. Yes, ma'am?
You mentioned that you had another location for the Bullet Creek students. Is that still in existence also? Is that program running now?
That is still in existence, yes, ma'am. And that is at The Rock, the physical location of The Rock, which is on Gordonville Road. And because the way that area is set up, they, the Bullet Creek schools bus kids right to The Rock. So it works very similar to what we're doing at your schools.
Just to get a flavor for magnitude, with 50 kids at each school, what's it cost to run a program per year?
Well, a lot of the support will come in, we recognize, as in kind. With 50 being the threshold, we expect it's going to be between $80,000 and $90,000 a year.
For both locations?
For, actually, all three locations, so, yeah. But the majority of that, more than two-thirds, is for the Midland Public area.
I think that at Northeast and at Jefferson, what we're trying to do is, you know, this is a win-win for all of us. And so by having our staffs to contribute the food, that is a huge chunk. As you all know, if you're parents of any middle school-aged child, that's an enormous cost. So as our staffs bring in things, help to offset the cost, plus they're promoting the word of, you know, getting the kids involved at every opportunity and just being in support of the program in their classrooms when they're, you know, they're knowing, you know, you can talk to this tutor about it tonight when you go to The Rock, or maybe you need some tutoring help, maybe you should consider joining The Rock, or something along those lines. So it's something that some of our parents have been asking for for quite some time, but they haven't always been able to access for a variety of reasons, whether it's the tutoring or whether it's just help with supervision. Because what we've known historically is the kids that are lingering from 3:00 till 5:00. You know, they may not have bad intentions initially, but ultimately, they'll find some things to get their hands into, and it's not always good. So this is a great opportunity for us, and it's really an answer to a lot of things that we needed.
Can you give us some examples of some of the things that they do there? Some of the activities they participate in, or programs that they do, or just?
Sure, we have a very creative staff, and we really want the kids to go home having had fun. Because let's face it, this age group is not going to come back unless they've had fun. With that, we want to incorporate some very real learning opportunities. So along with the tutoring, you'll see what they call games with a purpose. So there's a lot of team-building games, a lot of exploring-type games. They're bringing in a science component that, of course, is built around fun, an art component. We are working with other organizations in the community to come in and do things to help spread their mission, to help true their mission, and educate youth on things that are relevant to them. So they'll bring in special activities or special little group things. Just a lot of games and a lot of playing. They were playing Spud the other day. I have no idea what Spud is. They, that's just constantly on a move. And what they're doing is, because we want to give kids opportunities to participate, but not do any kind of forced participation. Again, with this age group, it's really very different in an after-school program than what we would have experienced in elementary school. So when a student comes in, there's probably four or five different things going on at any time. So the kids do not have to participate. And there's one section they call just chilling. So the kids just want to hang out, if they just want to visit, if they just want to talk, that's fine. One thing our staff is very good at is engaging students who might be on the fringe. So it's a really good opportunity for kids who maybe are having a little bit more difficult time connecting with their peers or are just kind of a little standoffish. Our staff will work extra hard to make sure those kids are engaged. And it really does a great job of building your group of students together because we start building friendships and relationships inside the students, in the group of students. And that spreads out through the whole school day and into everything they do, and in fact, the whole future school years.
Have you found the age spread to be a challenge?
The 6th through 8th grade? Now, we find that to be great because we're not trying to do 6th through 12th grade. 6th through 12th is a challenge, but the 6th through 8th grade, you know, you do see the younger kids, especially at the beginning of the school year, when they're very young 6th graders, you know, they're going to gravitate more to their own little groups. And that's one of the reasons why we offer a variety of activities for the kids because age is going to divide it up a little bit. But again, that's what our staff has worked with for 13 years, so they've kind of got that all worked out.
Just thanks to the administrators, teachers involved, I mean, you guys are taking some really good, well-proven facts. Legacy Center, I think some of the buzzwords were quoted. The Legacy Center helps build upon and reinforce it. It's a really good program and great intervention. And you'll never know how many kids you affect because you never know how many things you prevent. By kids being positive, positive role models and so forth, so just appreciate you guys with the effort.
Thank you. And if I could just make a positive comment here, we're really impressed with Midland Public Schools. You guys are being great to work with, and the leadership at both the schools. We really just can't say enough about the principals and the assistant principals. Okay. But it really is, you know, it's taken a little extra work on their part, and they've taken a risk with this. And I think you guys will be very satisfied. And it is impressive to see the administration like that working, reaching out to make a big change and for big results, so thank you.
Thank you.
One other thing. Have you reached, have you approached or contacted the Big Give project? Or the female counterpart to that? I think it's Midland 100? And presented this idea to them quarterly? They donate a certain sum of money to a worthwhile organization, and I think you guys would fit right into that criteria. And it may, I think it would be really worth your time. And for what it's worth, as an aside, this may seem like a small amount, but if you guys can raise $500 in the next two or three weeks, I would be happy to match that, to help you out.
Well, thank you very much, and I'm sure we can do that. I'll get right back with you.
Good. If you're, if you're going to stick around for the meeting, I can touch base with you afterwards. Or Mr. Sherwin has my contact information.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
And we will approach the Big Give, and we are happy to say we were recipients from the Midland 100 Club earlier this year
Wonderful, good.
For our exposure program. So that's off the list for a few years, but they were very generous in their support. If anyone else has any other funding suggestions, please do let me know. Or anybody else wants a match, whatever. Matches are good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. No, thank you. It's great to see. Mike, I'll turn it back to you.
We have administrative appointment this evening. Midland Dow High School had a assistant principal's position open, and we had the Administrative Personnel Committee interview, and they unanimously selected Matt Samaki. And Matt is here with us this evening, along with his wife, I see, who is an employee of the district as well. I found out this evening. And so I'll give Matt an opportunity to introduce himself to the board, if you'd like to come up to the mic, Matt.
Good evening. After growing up in Midland as the son of two educators, Jim and Ann Samaki, I look back fondly for everything Midland Public Schools provided for my family and for me. As a 1998 graduate of HH Dow High School, I feel Midland Public Schools gave me the skills and foundation necessary to grow academically and progress professionally. As a professional, I have been a teacher for the past 10 years, nine of which were with Freeland High School, where I taught AP US History, Government, Economics, and Psychology, and assumed leadership roles as a teacher and as a coach. I'm very grateful to the Freeland Community School District, who provided me with the opportunities to grow as an educator. I had countless wonderful experiences and interactions with the community of Freeland. However, now I will return home for the next step in my career as an educator in the field of administration. As an administrator, I look forward to working with the community, students, staff, administrators, and school board in whatever capacity necessary. I plan to demonstrate to Midland my leadership, technological, curriculum, and interpersonal skills to the best of my ability. I will take what skills I currently have and continue to develop them to become the best educator I can be. I cannot thank everyone involved in this process enough for this opportunity. My family cannot thank you enough either. My wife, Juliette Samaki, who teaches at Plymouth Elementary, and our two daughters, Genevieve and Josephine, are excited to now all be a part of Midland Public Schools for now and in the future. Thank you.
Any questions or comments to Matt before we move into approval of the appointment?
You're welcome.
Welcome.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Yes.
In 1998, when you were graduating from high school at Dow, did you have any inkling that you'd be back as an administrator someday?
This has been quite a surreal experience, to say the least. No, I can honestly answer that, no. No, and it's wonderful, and I am looking forward to September 23rd and walking back into the building as an administrator and making a great career change.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Any others? I'll avoid the temptation of saying, "Welcome back, Cotter," but I didn't. And second, I'll apologize in advance if I call you Jim on more than one occasion. And lastly, you are much brighter and better-looking than he was.
He'll enjoy that.
Or is. That's my comment. Any others? I'll take a motion to accept the appointment.
Support.
Moved by Dr. Kaminsky, support by Mr. McFarland. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? The ayes have it. Welcome aboard. I may have showed my age when I made the "welcome back Cotter" comment. Your students don't have a clue what that means. You'll have to send them to YouTube. Okay, then we'll move on to there. I'll hand it over to Ms. Klein.
Yes, and this is the second part of a proposal that has carried over from last year. We began talking about this in the Finance, Facilities, and Operations Committee meetings. And you took the first bit of action when you approved the salary letter in June, and that was to improve the wage rates for substitute bus drivers. We began discussions about the difficulties we were having keeping and having enough substitute bus drivers. And so the Transportation Department came up with a two-pronged suggestion. The first was improving the wages for the subs themselves. The second was to provide a bit of an incentive for drivers to perhaps be a little more careful in their use of sick days, and to reward those who, over time, have accumulated sick days and have not created a need for substitutes. So we bring to you a proposal to amend the Transportation Handbook, which is officially referenced in How Midland Schools Work. To add the language, if a regular driver has accumulated a minimum of 60 days, and we're referring there to sick days, the driver may use them for winter break, spring break, snow days, and professional development days. Drivers will not be allowed to drop below 45 sick days. A maximum of seven days may be used within the period of September through May. Continued eligibility for use of sick days in this manner is contingent on maintaining a minimum of 45 sick days. This does reward those drivers who have accumulated sick days. And you may not be aware that as hourly school-year employees, they are only paid on days in which school is in session. And so extended break periods, particularly in the wintertime around Christmas, if we have snow days on either side of that, can lead to a very long period of time when drivers receive absolutely no payment at all. And so this will allow them to perhaps spread their pay a little more evenly through the school year. We've met with the drivers, made them aware of this, and they're also in support of it. Very happy to see it move forward, so we would recommend approval in amending the handbook.
Board's pleasure.
I move we accept action item 5.3, MPS Bus Driver Compensation Benefits.
Support by Vice President Baker, move by Treasurer Branstad. Any questions or comments? See none, we'll move into a vote. All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you, Linda. We'll move into Finance. Turn it over to Treasurer Branstad for a report from the FFO committee meeting.
All right, we met last Tuesday, the first day of school. And besides our committee, Dave Youngstrom from Yo and Yo is also here. He reviewed the draft of the Annual Financial Statements and Auditor's Report of June 30th, 2013. The opinion is unmodified with no findings. And this is an audit terminology change. What used to be known as an unqualified opinion in the past is now called an unmodified opinion, meaning that the auditors had to make no modifications to the financial statements. So a full report will be made at the September 23rd, 2013 Board of Ed meeting. Following the general presentation, the staff excused themselves to provide the three board members on the committee a chance to meet privately with him. Let's see, Mrs. Klein presented information from Thrun Law Firm regarding permissible election dates and deadlines. Mr. Sherwin indicated that the area superintendents recommend holding the MCESA enhancement millage renewal election on Tuesday, February 25th. MPS is weighing whether to use this opportunity to also renew its own operating millages as well, all of which expire in May of 2015. Doing so would significantly reduce the cost of an election. Legal counsel has suggested that we also consider whether it would be prudent to have a separate request for a tax rate somewhat higher than 18 mils. This would provide protection in the event that local property tax values increased at a greater rate than the rate of inflation, preventing the district from levying the full 18 mils. Let's see, the group reviewed the requirements for qualifying for the best practice incentive, which has been included in the 2013-14 budget. New this year is a requirement to include additional financial information on a dashboard. And MPS hopes to use a state-approved tool called Munentrix to meet these additional requirements. And the next time we'll meet will be Tuesday, October 1st.
Any questions of Ms. Branstad? See none, we'll move on to 6.2, and I'll hand it back to Linda.
Yes, it's gift time. We have gifts that have been received and processed totaling $9,357 from the Chestnut Hill PTO, the Jefferson Parent Advisory Committee, the Chestnut Hill Administrative Account, and then the Erin and Esther Oberlin Gift Fund. And this is a fund that, I'd like to recognize them for supporting this for many, many years. They have a They have a particular warm spot for Midland High School. And even though they no longer have children in school, I believe they've all graduated from Midland Public Schools, they still feel very strongly that they'd like to support the programs. And so every year, for the past number of years, they've made a gift in support of at-risk students in order to promote a positive outcomes program at Midland High School. We do have two gifts that require your acceptance because they each exceed $5,000. The Chestnut Hill PTO is purchasing some key card readers for the building at a total of $7,300. And the Plymouth PTO makes a large blanket annual gift rather than numerous small gifts through the year to cover supplies, the classroom magazines, field trips, books for the teachers, media center, and the school office. And that totals $17,204.50. We seek your approval of those two gifts.
I'll accept a motion on 6.3.
I will move that we graciously accept 6.3.
Support.
Support. Any questions or comments?
Thank you very much to all these organizations. Their support is amazing.
I reiterate, echo what everybody else has said. Thank you, thank you, thank you. The generosity in this community just continues to impress me in this town. It's fantastic. With that, all in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you for the donations. With this, we'll move on to Human Resources and I'll turn it over to Mr. Verlendi.
Thank you. For information, the board and the staff extend their deepest sympathy to the family of Mary Jean Bobelik, who passed away August 23rd, 2013. She began her employment with the Midland Public Schools in 1959 as an elementary teacher at State Street School, right next door. She retired with 29 years of service with MPS in 1988, and she was the recipient of the Gerstaker Teacher Proficiency Award for Excellence in 1970.
Our sympathies to her family and thanks for what she did for us all those years.
Yes.
Moving on through the agenda, those see a list of correspondence to and from the board and a listing of our future meetings, which for the balance of this year are regularly scheduled meetings at 7:00 here. And with that, I'll take a motion to go into closed session to discuss a confidential attorney-client privilege issue. It's a move. Support. Move by Dr. Commisius, support by Mr. McFarland. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Do we need a roll call vote to go out? Close session? I don't think so. I think we're good. With that, I'll announce to the public, when we come back, we will just go into our study discussion period where we make comments amongst board members and that'll be the remainder of the agenda for the evening. So I'll have to ask the room to be cleared. I will tell you, this will be very, very brief. So those who wish to stay around, it won't be very long.
Thank you. We are back to open session. We'll let the audience return to their seats before we begin the rest of the agenda.
Okay. All righty, I think everybody's returned who's going to return. We'll now move to the study discussion session, which is the last item on the agenda. I'll start to my right with Lynn.
I'd just say it's nice to be back. There's lots going on in the schools and you can kind of feel the enthusiasm and the excitement. So I'm looking forward to all the activities and the sporting events and band and music. So I hope everyone has a great year. And once again, congratulations to Matt Samaki. I always think I'm feeling older, but Matt graduated with my oldest son and they were opponents on the football field for six years. So wow, seeing him as a principal now, I guess I am getting older. So congratulations. It'll be exciting for him to be back, I know, at Dow High School. Thank you to The Rock. What a great partnership. We know that the middle school will be very supportive and the students are excited to be there. It's a wonderful program, as we heard tonight. And welcome to all our new staff members. I was out of town, so was not able to welcome you at the breakfast, but we are glad to have you on board.
Yvonne?
I have nothing really to add, just want to say congratulations to Mr. Samaki and wish him well in his new position.
Okay. Quick. Okay. Thank you to the donors and the guests of the district. It's always appreciated and we're off to, looks like, another great start. I know that list at the end of the year is really at a very impressive level and we're very grateful for that. With the FFO report, I know we're going to go over at our next board meeting the results of the audit, but I think it has been year after year after year of no findings on an audit and thanks to the people in our finance department for making sure that that happens. And that's just exciting. Shows the strength of the district. And then congratulations to Matt Samaki, his appointment at Dow High School. Thank you. On to you.
All right, well, I think you guys have said a lot of it, but I loved hearing the presentation on The Rock and I think it's another reminder to all of us. So many people in the community are so generous to Midland Public Schools and we see that, we approve that. But they're also so generous to other things in the community that directly impact our students that we don't see every time we come here on a weekly basis. And what a great program to offer kids. Other than that, it looks like we're off to a great year. Teachers haven't disappointed. We've been doing a lot of homework at our house already, so there was no break-in time. So...
And that's good to hear.
I'm not complaining personally. Anyway, no, seems like it's going to be a great year. So that is it.
Well, it's good to be back. I feel like I've been away for a little while. Adding to the strength of the district, I think the number of teachers and professionals that we've hired, I missed the meeting as well because I was unavailable. It's just exciting. I mean, it's great to see all these new people coming into the district to take care of our kids. I was really impressed with The Rock. I think it's a wonderful program and I would encourage everybody to try and support it in any way, shape, or form. And really, that's all I have for tonight. So with that, I'll pass it off to Jerry.
Okay. My biggest comment is again, thanks to The Rock and Scott, I'll be lining up the match there.
All right. One other thing, I wanted to just publicly thank him for his service and wish her well and her future endeavors.
Yep, thank you. And I'd like to thank everybody for what appears to be a smooth, but more importantly, safe start of our new school years. At least to my knowledge, we haven't had any car pedestrian incidents. And I'm very thankful to our community to keep their eyes open because kids are still darting out and about and will be for nine months. So thank you very much for that.
So, did you say you're going to match the full 500?
Yes, I did.
Right on.
You got a full verbal commitment. Back to Mike.
I'm going to go through the letters fairly quick because you have touched on so many of them that we talked about through the last two weeks. Opening meeting, I thought, went extremely well. Jerry opened it with a "Welcome back" and we had Dr. Dolinsky, who I thought did a great job, speaking to him. We also gave an update with staff on where we are with the IB PYP program as well as problem-based learning, or project-based learning, where we're moving through that process as well. So that was good for the staff to know the progress that we've made during that opening week. Our bus drivers administered assistance and our paraprofessionals also were trained and I got a lot of good feedback on the training from there as well. I shared with you an email from Blake Sobel about some of the technology upgrades. And if you haven't had a chance, I really found the MPS YouTube channel to be potentially pretty powerful in using that. And so take a look at that channel if you get a chance. The IBAT team on IB has met. And so we are looking at how do we sustain ourselves with the IB diploma program. And there's some proposals that Mr. Cooper will work through and potentially bring to you at some point on that piece of it, as well as the progress made with the elementaries moving forward in Phase 1 this year in the PYP program. And the middle school program is kind of regaining ground and ready to go back and take a look at the middle school. And I think Bob shared with you last board meeting that there's kind of a new MYP program out there that potentially will help us move forward with that piece. The Midland Tomorrow Marketing Plan that Mr. Ellinger was working on and kind of handed it off as we have gone, we've made some pretty good gains on that. I met with Linda Coglan from that group last week with Cindy, and we got some new ideas and some new approaches, but we're obviously making some good gains. The Monday Communicator she loves, and so that was a piece of, wasn't something we did to meet that, but it certainly fit in very well into the marketing plan as we were going forward. And let's see, new assistant principal we talked about, and I also welcome Matt and very excited. I was kidding the team that brought the recommendation forward. I certainly had no problem with the social studies former coach returning to the district. Kind of felt familiar to me, those of you. Last week, or yes, the end of last week, we also met with the Herbert H. and Grace A. Dow Foundation to finish some unfinished work from last spring. Linda Lipsit, Luanne Beziger, and Bob Cooper did a great job of, it was more of a discussion than a presentation to them, and did a great job of some clarifying questions and answers for them. And so I think we'll hear good things from them as we go forward, we certainly hope. The Leadership Midland does a tour and so it'll be my first experience, and that's this week. And so we're very excited about hosting them and what a great opportunity to show off our schools and the good things we do. I also will be completing, Carol left me a note in regards to the Dow Community Gives and applying for the $75,000 piece of that. It's due in October, and so I'm working on that piece to make sure we stay on top of that as we go. Student enrollment class sizes, you know, we've been watching those very closely and they're really, we had a lot of movement in the last week or so, but I want to give Gary kudos here. He watches that daily. And so he's pulling his reports daily and working with the principals and trying to manage those class sizes. And enrollment in class sizes is just about where we had originally planned and expected. It's not perfect in any manner during these budget times, but it's certainly stayed in the boundaries where we were looking for them to be. And the FFO Committee, I think you said it well, Angela, and what a great job Linda and Carol do there. And that came out strongly from Dave Youngstrom. So great job, Linda. And that's all I have.
Thank you. And Roger, I'll make it worth your while for staying. I was remiss at the beginning with Kim's resignation to say we will begin the process that's ordained by statute and by our policies to fill the seat, appoint the seat within 30 days up to the next election. And we'll be dusting that off and you'll be hearing more about that as we go forward. Any other comments?
Was that worth it, Roger?
With that, we'll stand adjourned.